All right, hello everyone. This is July 25th, 2023 meeting of the Cohasset Select Board at 6 o'clock PM. Tonight's meeting will be conducted in person at the Royal Commons, i.e. Senior Center. The meeting will also be livestreamed on Zoom and Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform which can be accessed using the link provided on the second page of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called upon by the chair. Board members will be able to ask any questions of any participant. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at the discretion of the chair and time permitting will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide, members of the public that is their full name and address for the public record. Please note comments on platforms will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. All right. Roll call. Mr. Plex?
Chris Plex here.
Paul Grady present.
Ellen Mar present.
Jack Gray present.
Jeanne Healy Dipple present. All are invited to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is executive session under exemptions three and six. First, under exemption three, this is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation of a public body and the chair so declares, the chair so declares, and the board will discuss the navigation by law and the PFAS litigation. Second, under exemption six, this is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental impact on the negotiating position of the public body. The chair so declares. The board will discuss a pot of potential property acquisition. I'd like to invite a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
One second.
All right, we need to do roll call vote for this. Mr. Plex?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will now recess into executive session and return at approximately 7:00 PM.
The Select Board session, we're out of Executive Session now. It is 7:06. Right now, we'll take public comment for any item not on the agenda. Okay. And just so everyone knows, the Zoom has been going in and out today because of the thunderstorm. So that's sort of where we are from a technological standpoint. So just keep trying. We're having some trouble here too on our end trying to get the Wi-Fi. Eagle Scout project.
Hi, my name is Owen Canal. I'm part of Cohasset's Tube 28. I'm a life scout. And for my Eagle Scout project, I will be building a new composting site behind CHS at the backfield. I'll be working on this project with the Sustainability Planner and Grant Coordinator, Montana Castle. My goal for the project is to fundraise enough money for two, three bin composting units. And the next step of the process is to deconstruct the current composting site and to build a new one at the far side of the backfield. And on the picture, the arrow indicates where the new one will be going from the current one. Next slide. Here. The timeline for this project. In May and June, we will go over the plans and blueprints for this project. And we'll schedule a presentation with the school and the town select board. In July, I will be presenting to Dr. Sullivan and the town select board. And from August to September, I'll present for the Eagle Scout board for approval. Then I will begin fundraising. And once I got approval from all three boards, I'll begin the deconstruction of the current site. And then I will start building a new site. Next slide. Sorry, I think the fundraising goal is 2,500 instead of 1,500. And I'll achieve this goal by either doing a car wash, fundraise at the farmer's market, ask local hardware stores for discounts and donations. And also, I could receive funds from the school to cover part of the needed cost for the project. This is what the composting bin will be looking like. It is 36 inches by 36 inches by 120 inches. And it is a lot cleaner than the old site. Why I chose this project? I chose this project because eco-friendly. It'll help my school. And it'll inspire other CHS students to be more green-friendly. And thank you for allowing me to present. Are there any questions or comments?
Questions or comments from the board?
Can I just clarify, this is for next year, right?
No, I'll be doing this this summer.
Oh, this summer? You've already started, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any approvals you need from us?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
I think it's an excellent project. And you're to be commended for spending your time on this when I'm sure some of your friends are maybe sailing or doing other things. So congratulations and nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, so 7:15, we are on to boards and committees now. So do we have anyone on for the Alternative Energy Committee? Okay, great. All right. Ms. Russell, would you like to come up here first? So we have three people for two spots. We welcome all three of us to come up. Why don't you start first, ma'am? And we'll hear about yourself and your interests.
Oh, I didn't know what the format was. I said in my bio, I invest and I raise money for tech companies. And my interest in the last decade has been in sustainability. I judge a lot of pitch competitions and invest in clean energy. I got to, I was a part of the delegate that Massachusetts sent to Denmark last June to better understand how Denmark went green. And I took a lot of lessons about how they flip. I have a lot of respect for the current AEC. I've gotten to know some of its members. And I'm very interested in becoming a member if that opportunity avails itself.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions with the board?
Just like to say thank you.
Thank you. I was fortunate getting to know you. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Daley, would you like to come up real quick? Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Tom Daley. Do you need the address too? 11 Ledgewood Farm Drive in Cohasset. I've been here for 26 years. I'm an engineer, graduate of Maine Maritime Academy and University of Maryland for a master's degree in management. Spent 30 years active duty in the military. And upon retiring from there, spent 22 years Spent 30 years active duty in the military and upon retiring from there, spent 22 years at Boston University, retiring as the VP of Facilities Management, where we have worked diligently to bring us to zero carbon by 2050.
Great. Are there any questions that the board has from Mr. Daley? Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, Ms. Gank.
I'm Martha Gankimi. Hey, I live on 24 Rest Way in Cohasset. And we've had a house here for 30 years. And I'm just looking for a way to give back to the town, to be of some service and to help save some money and bring the town in a more sustainable direction. Our house is totally powered by heat pumps and solar panels. Cars are solar panel-driven. I'm a landscape designer, and I feel like I can bring some aesthetic help to maybe some of the projects that the AEC are working on. What else can I tell you? This is the third time I've applied.
Okay, okay.
And I work well with the committee members. Tanya and Chris are friends, and I've worked with them.
Okay. Great, well, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, and Betsy, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think we have two spots, right? And we have three candidates for the AEC, which is why I think we invited people to come. And I'm going to check right now. You know, I will just say, from my perspective, this is going to be a really hard choice because I think all three candidates are very impressive. And I wonder if there's any room for even enlarging the committee, you know, to allow everyone to have a spot on it if this is a Select Board Committee. I don't know, folks have other thoughts? As we think through?
Do we have the ability? Is this a bylaw committee?
I was just checking that. I believe this is, yes, bylaw committee.
So we can't just add it?
I'm sorry, no, this isn't a bylaw committee. This is a Select Board Committee.
I move we appoint all three.
If there's an open spot that wasn't filled, if this is correct, I just pointed out. So there's one, two, three. Is that accurate?
I was checking, we have one open spot and three people. We were just conferring on the open spots. So we know we definitely have one open spot and possibly two others. Deborah Cook and Michael Schmidt.
Yeah, they're open. And then there's this open one that wasn't filled last year.
Okay, so we might actually have.
Because then that makes seven, which would be appropriate for more cabinet members.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a motion on the floor, Adam Chairman, but obviously we'll wait till the other discussion.
And what's your motion again, Mr.?
To appoint all three.
Okay. Is there a second?
Have we confirmed that we have the ability to?
Yes.
I would second the motion.
And we will check and confirm. We're looking at the sheet that we've been given. That appears that we have three, but we just want to make certain because we did think earlier it was only two. So I just want to make certain. And I do believe this is a Select Board Committee. So if we had to penangle things, we probably could later on, if need be. Okay, so we have three candidates. It appears we have three spots. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Nope. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Welcome to the AEC. Thank you.
That was just too easy. I think we want to hear more from you.
I think another must have been like, we're interested, I realized. We'll have to think through that one. Next on the agenda, Community Preservation Committee. So Preservation Committee. So here we have the recommendations from the other boards. So we have a recommendation for Ms. Hobson as the Planning Board Rep. Virginia, hello, as the Housing Authority Rep. Mark Saint Ange, Historical Commission Rep. And then we have to appoint a rep from our board as well. So why don't we do the three recommendations from the committee? So this is a statutory committee, and we take recommendations from the three. So is there a motion for Ms. Hobson, Ms. Najmi, and Mr. Saint Ange?
I'd make that motion to approve Dear Hobson, Virginia Nagjmi, I'm sorry, Virginia, and Mark Saint Ange.
I would second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one's opposed. All right, now we have a Select Board Rep. Is there anyone who would like to be a Select Board Representative? Mr. Grady is volunteering. Would anyone like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Grady? Any second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. No one's opposed. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Conservation Commission. We have one appointment for Ms. Valeria Romano. Any discussion? Is she here? No. Any discussion? Would anyone like to nominate her?
Oh, no.
Ms. Romano. Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one is opposed. Okay. Elder Affairs, Marcia Sylvia. Is Ms. Sylvia here? Nope. Okay. I would entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Sylvia.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one's opposed. All right, Norfolk County Advisory Board. Ms. Kennedy, right now, is our current representative. She was appointed based on her time on the Select Board. It need not be a Select Board Representative. She is willing to continue serving if we are so inclined. She's from Norfolk. I think it would be great to have her continue serving unless there's another Select Board member who would like to travel to Norfolk.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Diane Kennedy to the Norfolk County Advisory Board.
Any seconds?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. All right. Okay. It is 7:19. We are a little bit ahead of time. Is Mr. Norman here?
So my name's Adam Norman. I'm a resident of 88 Doane Street in Cohasset. And I'm here on behalf of the Cohasset Open Space and Recreation Committee, on which I serve as co-chair. And this is regarding the proposed bylaw to ban single-use plastic water bottles, the sale in town. I sent you a copy, which you may have reviewed, but in a nutshell, any single-serving plastic water bottles under one gallon in size would be prohibited. It wouldn't apply to sparkling water-flavored drinks. And so essentially, the type of water bottles that Mr. Creighton has in front of him. And this wouldn't go into effect until 2025, January 1, 2025. And we're asking to add it to the town warrant so the citizens could take a vote. Now, why are we doing this? Essentially, to preserve the natural beauty of the town of Cohasset by reducing plastic waste. Plastic water bottles, as I'm sure you're aware, don't have a deposit return. So many of them end up in landfills. In fact, 90% of plastic water bottles, unfortunately, don't get recycled. And it takes 1,000 years, after 1,000 years, for them to fully degrade. So the good news is, there's plenty of alternatives to plastic water bottles, refillable water bottles, which many people use. There's also a local company, Everybody Water, that has a cardboard type of single use. And even better, these aluminum bottles, which are essentially recyclable in perpetuity. And the high school and middle school already have hydration filling stations all throughout the school. Deer Hill has two and is looking to add another. I spoke with the facilities director today. Osgood has one and is looking to add two more. So essentially, our committee is going to be taking some steps to make sure this is as convenient as possible for citizens, give plenty of time for businesses to adapt so that they can comply with the bylaw. And we're trying to drum up community support. So as you know, probably there is a ban on single-use or plastic bags in town in 2018. So I think there is already a lot of support for environmental initiatives among the citizens. We'd be joining 25 other communities throughout Massachusetts in having this bylaw throughout. Many of them are on the Cape and the Islands. Also, Hingham just passed a similar bylaw. In fact, the one that we drafted is very similar to one that Hingham just approved a few months ago. We did a survey over the last week on Instagram. About 300 respondents, and 70% supported the ban. We also, I had been speaking with local businesses, particularly those that would be impacted, who currently sell single-use plastic water bottles. And 2/3 of those that I surveyed did support. And I spoke with all the owners and managers of those businesses. So I think I could have gotten more support from some of the folks working at those businesses. There seemed to be a lot of support behind this among citizens. So also, yeah, finally, last thing, I've reached out to a bunch of town committees. So we have the support from the Water Department. I've reached out to the Alternative Energy Committee. In fact, I'll be meeting with them in September. I'm on their agenda to try to get official support, going through all the proper channels. So the Conservation Commission, Recreation Department, Harbor Committee, and Sandy Beach Association. Just waiting to hear back from all of them. So happy to answer any questions that you have, any concerns.
Other questions that the board has?
Yes. Sorry. So we got, you know, the bylaw in our packet, and I was like, where did it come from? And I recall seeing something on Facebook, a memo you had put out on Cohasset 143 to business owners. So that's how I kind of figured out it was you that had submitted this to us. So not really knowing much about the Open Space and Recreation Commission, I went on the webpage and I looked at the seven-year report. How does this fall into your charge?
Yes, so I'd say our commission essentially is charged with preserving open space, expanding open space, making citizens aware of open space. But we also are very environmentally minded. And so I say it doesn't necessarily fall under our charter, but it's a bill that we're sponsoring. We're hoping to get support from other committees around town. But I don't know if it's something that has to be explicitly stated in our charter in order for us to sponsor a bill and add it to the town warrant. But we have a lot of environmental initiatives. We recently, with Wild Cohasset, put a pollinator garden over near Willwright. And you may have seen one of us, each member of the committee is taking turns watering it every morning. Seems to be doing pretty well, although we got a little help from Mother Nature as well.
And I was curious, because like Hingham had their group Cleaner Greener Hingham sponsored their bill. And on the Cape, it's Sustainable Practices. They sponsored all of that. And what was interesting, when I was researching it, three Cape towns that had passed the bylaw actually rescinded the bylaw. And I couldn't find any reason why. And a lot of what I read about this is some of the unintended consequences. Now, I applaud the effort. You know, I myself have gone away from plastic water bottles. I drink out of, you know, I drink filtered water. But there are unintended consequences, especially for the youth, who only then have options for parents to purchase, you know, sugar drinks or Gatorade or soda or things that are not all that healthy for growing children. And there hasn't been enough of this. There's only three states in the country that have this as a statewide ban. And as you indicated, 24 out of the 351 communities in Massachusetts have adopted it. So I don't think there's really any empirical data to say, you know, there is a direct cause and effect to childhood obesity or to ill health effects on it. Do you have any information on that?
I don't have information, but I would say our intent is not to push children towards carbonated beverages, sodas, high-calorie drinks. It's really just to get them to embrace water reusable bottles. So I think every kid I've seen at every sporting event, my two kids, nine and eight years old, play several sports. And I can't think of ever having seen a kid bring in a Poland Spring water bottle. It's almost, every kid has one of these type of reusable water bottles. And I look at it as like a piece of sports equipment. So for example, if you had to go to a lacrosse game, you showed up without your helmet, you would go home and get it. You wouldn't just go buy another helmet. So same thing with a water bottle. If you forgot your water bottle, you'd just go home and get it. I mean, I think there's probably ways, if certain members of the community couldn't afford a reusable bottle, we could probably figure out a way to get funding to provide them.
Right, right. So the town of Concord has had this in place for 10 years. Is that correct?
I don't know that.
Yeah. I think they were the first town. And in their first five years, they distributed 1,000 gallons through their water filter, their water, we called them hydration stations in the school, which is about 4,000 bottles of water. So I think, to your point, it either makes them, parents or the kids, fill up at home or they're going to a hydration station to fill up. Now, you did have a lot of, we had a lot of comments about the quality of Cohasset town water.
Yeah.
What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I think unfairly probably has a bad reputation. I heard about some of the comments on Cohasset 143 as well. So I reached out to the Water Department, and their water, a few years ago, was found to have elevated PFAS, forever chemicals. But since then, they've made some changes and they test it regularly. So the EPA limit, federal EPA limit for PFAS is 70 parts per trillion. The state of Massachusetts has more strict laws. It's only 20 parts per trillion. The tests conducted in April 2023 found 5 and 1/2 parts per trillion. So it's not zero, which would be ideal, but certainly well below the state limit.
I think a lot of it, too, is the taste. You're coming out of the town.
Yeah, I mean, in addition to these type of water bottles, like you said, I mean, many people have Brita in their refrigerator or you can purchase, I went on eBay today, or Amazon today and found the five-gallon water dispensers. There's $129. So you can get presumably water that has zero chemicals and PFAS that way. I don't think it's too expensive, but.
And I apologize to my board. Oh, does Chris have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have.
I did, too.
I would echo that the Open Space Committee, which I think is one of the most important committees, and I've worked with it over the years. I think if this were to be brought up, it should be brought up by Open Space Committee and the resources of the town for the Open Space Committee should be done for that. I mean, if people feel that there's a need for a ban against single use, I think the way, the proper way is to get a petition and put it on the ballot for the whole town to use. So obviously, I drink water. I drink a lot. There's some reasons for that. But I don't think it should be handled in this manner. I think you should get a citizen's petition if you feel other people have done that. I think the plastic bag was done by a citizen's petition. But I just don't think that of all the important things that all the people, citizens do, there are a lot of things in conservation. I was on conservation for probably seven or eight years. We would not, in conservation, for example, you know, handle that. So I mean, no comment about that, but I don't, I think it's inappropriate.
Yeah, so if we were to put out a petition with the town, would we need a certain critical mass of respondents to make it valid? And would we need a certain majority to make it valid as well?
You have to, the standard, as I'm sure you know, the standard manner, you get a certain number of signatures. And then it goes on the ballot.
Yeah.
And then the citizens vote.
Okay.
And that's probably what I would say is the best thing to do. And it may well pass. I have no idea.
Mr. Grady?
I think it's a really admirable effort. I'm just going to tell you a couple of reasons why I'm against it. I think we're better served educating people on disposal, proper disposal, maybe up in the ante on littering. I do understand that. But my question is this, if we're getting rid of just water bottles, and I'm guilty, I stop and get a bottle of water usually on my way home or something like that from the office. But why aren't we doing away with Dr. Pepper? Why aren't we doing away with Gatorade? Why aren't we doing away with Diet Coke? Why aren't we doing away with Orange? Do you see where I'm going with this?
I do.
Just picking on, you know, bottled water, plastic bottled water. I understand that people do litter, but there's also my colleague, Ellen. litter, but there's also, my colleague Ellen made quite a few excellent points about getting it. So why one, why, you know, why the push on water? So I mean, I'd be personally against it.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to see a ban on all plastics, but the reality is, there's not really an alternative to a Diet Coke or a Gatorade. You can't just go refill it at a hydration station, whereas water is just so plentiful and so easy to substitute.
True. When you do, again, I'll paraphrase my colleague, you're stopping at the store, so you can't get a bottle of water, you get a Diet Coke, or you get your child a Diet Coke, or a beer, or something along those lines. Water is probably the most presentable item.
I personally don't leave home without this ever. It's just like my wallet and keys and cell phone. So I think it's just a matter of changing people's habits and attitudes. And I think it might be inconvenient at first, and that's why we're allowing for plenty of time for people to adapt. It wouldn't, I think, the time between now and 2025 is all about education. And it's going to be a big effort, but I, we have a lot of people who are super passionate about it on our committee, and I think that hopefully we'll be successful in doing that.
You take that down, you know, on Multi-Planted Avenue, is educating people on the problem with litter, and, you know, throwing bottles out a window, crushing bottles, leaving water bottles, you know, next to that Coke bottle they might step on in the street. That's where I'm, that's where I'm, that's where I'm education.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly super passionate about it. It's sad. Just this morning, on my commute to work, I counted five plastic water bottles. Couple, most of them were crushed, but just sitting there in the parking lot as I was on my way to work. So, you know, you may recall that our committee hosts the Earth Day cleanup event. So I think we've done a great job there and collecting a ton of trash, getting citizens involved. And I think a lot of people in this town, just given that we're a coastal town, it's very beautiful, care a lot about the environment. And so, yeah, I'm happy to conduct a survey. I, hopefully that petition will go the way I expect. And just based on the results from our online survey, I think we wouldn't have any problem getting the signatures. But I still think it's an important enough issue to add to the warrant for upcoming town hall.
I don't disagree with any of you said. I just think education.
Yep.
Something of a warm room.
Yeah, yeah, I think we have, I mean, to be honest, we've kind of just started on this initiative, and we have still a lot of work to do. But we have a lot of people who I think are going to spend a lot of time and effort to get that done.
Thank you so much.
I promise I'll be quick. I guess I'm the dissenting voice on the board here. I think this is a great idea. I'm glad you're doing it. I think it makes a lot of important progress, even if it's not going all the way to knocking out sugar-imperated beverages. I think it makes important progress. I'm not concerned with where the proposal is coming from. I think it is consistent with your mandate. And I would echo that my kids and my family are in the habit of grabbing a reusable bottle, taking it to school, taking it to work, taking it to sports. So it's not an inconvenience in my experience. And I also just wanted to clarify, what you're asking for is to put this on the warrant, right? So in a sense, it would go to a vote if it were on the warrant.
That's right. That's right.
Real quick, real quick. So if you want to check, West Tisbury did ban all plastic bottles, so Gatorade, water bottles, everything. So if you wanted to reach out to them and see how they're doing, there's one other town on Martha's Vineyard, but I forget which one it is. See, you know, see the resistance, did they get, compliance, or how's it working out? That would be good information.
I'll definitely do that, yeah.
And I would just say, I'm in Mr. Flex's camp. I think it's a good idea, for all the reasons that he articulated, and also because I routinely volunteer with my Boy Scout at the transfer station, and the town drinks a ton of water, ton. Like, it's just an incredible volume of water bottles. And I volunteered a lot at the Open Space Committee cleanup at Earth Day, and there's tons of water bottles strewn throughout our town, too. If you spend hours cleaning them up, you know, it paints the town in a slightly different light as you unearth everything from the crevices of Milliken Field. So I do think that there could be a benefit at the end of the day. But whether it's through the Select Board or a citizen's petition, those are two avenues that if the board were not, a majority were not inclined to necessarily put it on vis-à-vis a Select Board warrant, there is a process, once the warrant opens, in order to do that. And there's some, you know, some timeline. So you can stay in touch with us to the extent that you want to avail yourself, including through the Open Space Committee and, you know, all those, the many who support as well.
Thank you.
All right. So if you want to, we'll stay in touch on the bylaw. And I guess my question for the board right now is, is it the board's preference that this be done via citizen's petition, or would we like to continue the discussion vis-à-vis a Select Board warrant article? Is there a sense of the board?
I'd like to see it put to a citizen's petition.
I am in favor of either or both. I think a citizen's petition is the way to go. It really measures what people.
Sounds like.
Okay.
Your sense?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So 7:37. We're a few minutes early. The Historic District Study Committee. So this is just to open up the discussion. As you all may remember, we briefly discussed at our Golds meeting, helping to get airlifted a Historic District Study Committee, or, yeah, it's a committee. So under state law, there's certain requirements for those who should be on it, depending on the area. And I think if I recall correctly, the Cohasset Historic Commission recommended that we look at the village as sort of a starting area, which would require, for example, an architect to be at least on the committee, someone who is in the historic society. So I've gotten some, at least one person, saying that they would be interested in joining. I think this could be a good time to begin to advertise, including through Justin. And, you know, we can, we can put out information to say, hey, if people are interested, let us know, and including maybe those within the village area, including maybe it would be great to have, for example, a merchant who could participate. On the committee, we do have citizen appointments we can do. And typically, you want people within the potential new district to be, you know, an active part of weighing in on that. I don't know, people have any specific feelings, though?
I'm in favor of the Historic District. I just want to clarify that what we're talking about tonight would be a study committee that would study the potential of creating the district, correct?
Yes. And typically, it's for a certain area. So if, for example, it's in the village, which is where we were, we were talking about, based on the recommendation from the Cohasset Historic Commission, that we, you know, we'd want to alert people to that, because people who are, you know, in the village, for example, who may be affected by it, would be more likely to be interested of being on the committee.
Just one more comment. I'm in favor, especially because it's a study committed understanding if further steps would be appropriate. And also because I think when it comes to historic districts, there can be misconceptions that a study committee might help tease out more facts to educate the discussion.
Yes, Mr. Gray?
I'll pull you in favor. I don't know about the architect. Does it have to be an architect?
Yes.
I'd like to see someone from that area, or some well-versed in old homes, buildings that has genuine love and concern for them. And, you know, I know there's many architects that do as well, but also architects may want to build. And that's no store on an architect. So I think it's just going to be tempered with someone who also has a historical background, who, you know, cares about what's standing before them.
Well, and I apologize if I miscommunicate. It's not just, you know, it's going to be like a group of several people. The architect would be one among others. Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. We really need a way to thoughtfully, and I've actually managed properties and lived in two historic districts in Boston. It's just wonderful what it can be done, but it needs to be properly handled. You have to handle it. For instance, at one point, they were saying you had to put storm windows on, because they didn't like double-painted windows. So that was done away with. We also, we also think about our downtown, but we should also remember that we have Beechwood and the Beechwood Cemetery, and that what was formerly a church is a historic church. So there are places in town. So I think having a committee to study this is wonderful. And I'm looking out at people over here, and you know, we're going to have you be on the committee once we get it started. So good idea.
Yes. So in the May 8, 2023 meeting minutes for the Historical Commission, this subject was brought up, and a study needs to be funded, and it was indicated that perhaps CPC. So would that go to special town meeting or request to, because I don't think we have the cash to fund a study our own. So I think we'd have to go to CPC. And I think we need to define what the village is, and maybe the study group does that definition. I mean, I think of the village, and I think, I think of Ripley Road from the post office and all those buildings. Maybe somebody else doesn't, though, but that's what I think of. So when we talk about the village, and we start to socialize the idea, I think we need to be really clear exactly where the boundaries are, so people don't have misconceptions like, oh, they're going to make this street, you know, historic, or that street. Is it going to be Elm Street on the backside of the village where Fleming's Hardware is? Is that included? I think we need to be very specific about where the village starts and stops.
And I think that would definitely be a part of the study process.
Right.
I would add that I reached out to Mr. Coffey, who is the chair of the current Cohasset Common Historic District, and alerted him to what was going on, and to see if he had a feeling of whether his committee should be enlarged, because they're on the common, which obviously abuts, and there is, I think, a potential under state law that we could use the existing committee but enlarge it. And his response was that, given the sort of more unique issues in the village, where it's more commercial as compared to the common, which is more residential, it might make sense to have the two separate ones, which I think made sense. But I did want to, you know, let people know about that, and that we will keep him, in contact with him, because I do think it's important that, you know, that the committees have some consistency. So I would suggest going forward, we start to, you know, put the feelers out there for those who may be interested in applying, including reaching out to the Cohasset Historic Commission, to the extent they have suggestions on their end about people who may be a good fit. And then, to your point, we want to keep in mind funding a CPC study and asking CPC for.
Right. It would all be pending CPC funding.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else? All right, 7:45. Roads and sidewalks. We have Mr. Pimpare, our chair of the Roads and Sidewalk Committee. So I realize we have a lot of people interested in this topic here right now. Before I turn it over to Mr. Pimpare, I just wanted to say that the intent of, the original intent of the meeting was to really focus on the proposal by certain citizens to add parking at the triangle area on Cove Road, which abuts CHP, and the north side of the triangle. And that was the specific issue that was requested that the Select Board grapple with. That said, you know, the issue has been sufficiently enlarged, I think, for us to handle all of the issues surrounding Elm Street, at least begin to right now. And just by way of historic background, as many of you know, we had an Elm Street group that was active for many years. They had recommendations. That is the newer recommendation, but the older recommendations from the Elm Street Working Group, which were conceptual designs, they were not actually funded as engineering designs, back in 2022, came out to approximately 890,000 without moving the triangle. That was the last recommended design from the Elm Street Working Group. That design was not funded. The town applied for a state grant that was not approved. The town also sought money through the Forward Act legislation. That was not passed. So we were not successful in getting funding to move forward with what is a relatively expensive project for Cohasset in the world of roads and sidewalks. So it was, for example, 890,000 back then, and we typically fund about 300,000 each year for all roads and sidewalks in Cohasset, on top of the chapter 90 money we get, just to put things in scale. So the Select Board, at that point, we continued to engage, which some of you may have not seen, with our state rep and state senator on the Forward Act legislation to track that, to see if there was any money that would be coming out of that. Unfortunately, there was not. In the interim, we also created the Roads and Sidewalk Committee and had two additional reports commissioned on the state of all of our roads and all of our sidewalks in Cohasset to identify safety ADA issues, the wide variety of paving issues. Those reports came out, and it revealed multiple millions of dollars that we need to address in roads and sidewalks. And so we've asked our Roads and Sidewalk Committee, charged them with trying to give the Select Board advice on how to address roads and sidewalks generally throughout Cohasset, in light of those reports from a safety and connectivity standpoint. And one of the things we asked them to do was take a look at Elm Street, and I realize that there's a variety of views on the newest Elm Street plan. And, you know, what I would say about that is, I appreciate that there's a variety of views here. This was all, though, the plan was all based on time slash money that was donated by private citizens. And so I would just ask that people, you know, keep the tenor respectful in light of that, even if we do have a disagreement of opinion. So in light of that, Mr. Pimpare, if you, I just wanted to sort of set the table for where we are. And I would say the Select Board, I think, has some feedback, too, that we want to provide as well. But I wanted to give you the full.
Could I add something?
Yeah, please.
Um, a follow-up on what the chair just said, that we, in the parking around the island, on the north side of the island, then from Cove. Oh.
He's setting it below.
Oh, sorry about that. Anyway, I just wanted to extend just for clarification that the parking was proposed for going around Cove in front of the new condo project, from Cove up almost to the town dock, to the Oaks Estate, close to. So that's what we were initially about to discuss tonight, till this kind of escalated due to some emails that were sent out.
All right, Mr. Pimpare?
Thank you.
So Jay Pimpare, 713 Jerusalem Road.
I'm sorry to ask you, mine coming up, just so they can hear on Zoom, in case.
Jay Pimpare, 713 Jerusalem Road, Chairperson of the Sidewalk and Safety and Connectivity Committee. I know everyone refers to us as the Roads and Sidewalk Committee, but I want to state it's the Sidewalk and Safety, safety second in title alone, but safety first through and throughout. I want to recognize our vice chair back here, Ralph Dormitzer, who has also been very influential in providing comments throughout this, our meetings, et cetera. So as you said, we have many roads and sidewalks in this town that are in need of repair. Cut to the chase, Elm Street has been identified as a priority. If it's snow concerns from the DPW with respect to snow plowing, emergency vehicles going in and out every day, I think that's one thing we can probably all agree on, that Elm Street needs attention and needs to be addressed. So the plan that you see here in front of you, that plan, that plan, as you mentioned, was developed by a outside entity, was not developed by the Sidewalk Committee. The first time we saw that was probably two months ago. We did give comments to it. Last month, where I was also here at your invitation and provided comments as well. You know, there are, so what there, so at the, at our, two of our Sidewalk Committee meetings ago, we did.
Would you like to hold it, or would you like to understand?
Would you like to hold it or would you like to understand? Can you hear me back there?
Not really.
I'm not starting over, but I do appreciate.
One, two.
How's that? Good? All right, thank you. So first and foremost, the Sidewalk and Safety Committee is in full support of creating a safe environment, widening of sidewalks, creating American Disabilities Act compliant sidewalks, creating sidewalks, creating safety measures. And, and there are some safety measures that are created here. Our concerns were really around some of the parking. And the parking around the Cove Road area, Margin Street and the Triangle. And it's really, if you go out there on any given day, go out there today, this afternoon, there are a million kids driving from the Yacht Club to the Sailing Club, coming back and forth to the village. Putting park in those areas creates blind sightlines all the way across the board. It narrows the roadway. It creates issues with emergency vehicles, fire and police. I'll let the fire and police speak to that matter. I won't speak for them. But just coming by there, somebody opening up the door. Basically, you're in those areas, you're making roadways single file. And coming down Elm Street, which allegedly is supposed to be this beautiful view corridor, and now putting cars in the middle of your view corridor that was sold to the town, is again creating a sightline and a blind sightline coming up Margin Street. If you go down the other side, it's already a single file line on most days anyway. So that's where we stand. I know you're going to ask about cost. Last time I was here, the costs were about sixty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the quote from the contractor for the plan that you see in front of you. We did have some concerns with that. We thought the quote was low, and in fact, the quote was low. We were right. The estimated, well, the quote that came in now is nine hundred thousand dollars to pave and redo that. That does not take in consideration trees for another twenty thousand and the lighting, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars along the roadway. So the plan that you see now, the cost, because I know you're going to ask, is estimated at one point one million dollars. Right now, we have about seven hundred thousand dollars in the roadway budget. So even if we wanted to do this tomorrow as is, we would, there would be a four hundred thousand dollar shortfall. A question that did come up is could we pave the road as is? And I'll cut to that. Yes, in fact, the quote for that was three hundred and ten thousand dollars. It would be just a mill and overlay of the existing roadway. Chew up the road and pave it from almost downtown all the way through the triangle, et cetera. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars. It could be done within two to three, over the two to three working days over the course of a two week period. The one issue with that is that you have, if you're considering the plan and the plan is in your mind, that I know that we haven't made any decisions on the plan itself, is there's a crown in the roadway. And so if you're going to reevaluate the plan or go back to this plan, the roadway actually shifts over like seven feet. And the crown, you need a crown in the middle of the road so water can go both ways. And if we're doing that, we're moving the crown over, there would be considerable cost in the future if you were to reevaluate that. So I just want to bring that up. There was a grant, as you may have mentioned, we put a grant in for, to do, it's actually to mimic this project. We put the grant in for funding of nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We'll know in October whether or not the grant comes through. I gave you the paving plan for 2023. There are, the, after the CHP project, Margin Street is, is going to be paved down past the Oaks, over to the Yacht Club and down to Whitehead Road. That road will be paved in the upcoming months, late summer, early fall. So if there's any consideration due to anything, you know, now's the time to do it. So I'll, I'll open it up to questions. I'm not going to get into the other design aspects of it now. Our, our focus was really on the parking. I know that was in front of you. Those are our concerns. We are trying to create a safe environment in that area. We're not trying to create unsafe conditions. And there are alternatives. You know, my proposal would be to put a bike lane in there. If we have room for parking, why can't we put a bike lane in there? Let's put a bike lane around the Cove and other areas. And happy to talk about this, maybe not in depth tonight, but at another time where kids can ride their bikes and adults can ride their bikes as well coming through there. So I'll, I'll open it up to questions.
Just one clarifying question, including, I think, for many interested neighbors. If we were to, and I think Brian Joyce may be online and can answer this, but if we were to, if we were to replace the roads and the sidewalks, I think that would cost six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars based on brand new estimates we just got last night.
That's, yes, that's.
Is that right? Okay. I just wanted to confirm on that. And we could, in theory, use all of our roadway budget right now and make that happen?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Brady, I think you had one.
In the mic. In regard to the parking, I remember we discussed this on Roads and Sidewalks and we discussed it at length at the prior Select Board meeting. And, you know, I thought the general gist was that we weren't going to put the parking there, but that didn't come to pass. And in the interim period of time, we received a lot of letters. And we have to take that into account. You know, I do understand the crown of the road. So just make people aware that we can pave this year. We can get Elm Street up and running. Perhaps line it and the bike paths, seeing as the parking.
Depending on the design that you go with, yes.
Depending on the design.
Yes. And I know, I think Brian is, is online. Feel free to jump in at any moment, Brian. But, but yes, my discussions there is roughly seven hundred thousand dollars in the budget. This would, you know, a mill and overlay would, would kill half of that. But including the sidewalks as is, would, it would eat the budget. But it, it's doable and it can be done. And it can be done this year.
I think I can, can I project? Can you guys hear me without the microphone? So how many parking spots are on Elm Street now, including this area that wraps around? We talked about the diagonal parking in front of the Legion, parking on both sides. How many are there now and how many are in the, the plan that was presented to us?
That might be a better question for Mike to answer. Because I don't know if each individual parking spot has been laid out per se.
Okay. Because I think if it's less, it, it's a nonstarter. I think if there's fewer parking spots in the plan you presented to us.
Oh, absolutely not. There, there are more. The plan that you have in front of you are up on the screen there. There are more parking spots around the harbor.
Both sides of the road?
Do you want to put the plan, Mike, do you want to give a little?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to see on, and forgive me, I'm directionally challenged. Is it the nor, the west side or the east side? What side is the fire station on?
The fire station is.
It's on the upper side, right?
Yeah. Fire station is right over here.
Right. So are all those darker gray shaded boxes, are those parking spots?
That is sidewalk.
That's sidewalk.
The top on the fire station side is all sidewalk.
And parking spots.
No.
Are blue is the parking spots?
The proposed plan.
No, with the new plan, there's not, there isn't.
Right, right.
Side of the road, yes. Losing all those spots.
Well, let me, let me have the conversation, okay, with, with Jay so that I can, so I can understand it. Because that's what I thought, is that there's, those are sidewalks and there's no parking, where there is parking now on that side of the street, there's no parking in this plan on that side of the street.
It's not proposed because the roadway is being narrowed as well. You'll see the existing gray on the, we'll call it the south side. There's a grass buffer about six feet, six feet, is being pushed out into the roadway for the addition of the six foot buffer with trees and designated parking.
No, it's your.
So the roadway is actually being narrowed.
No, I, I understand that. So I just want to clarify on the parking. If we're losing parking on one side of the street, how can we, how? Because I'm trying to think about it logically in my head. How can we possibly have more parking?
Well, you, you, the designated spots, if you move it down, are proposed down in the Cove area.
Okay. So that doesn't really support the residents adjacent to the fire station and a few houses down.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to stay away from the residential discussion. That's a discussion for you. This is the plan that was presented. But I'll answer those questions, yeah.
So right now, before we go on, I do want to recognize our fire chief, who's here. And thank you, thanks, Jay. I would like, if you don't mind, Chief Doc, to talk about the parking that now in this plan is proposed to be pushed up near Cove and the north side of the triangle and your perspective on that. We asked you to weigh in, including about safety issues.
So my biggest concern right now is the parking.
I think I can hear you.
Yeah.
You guys can hear me, right? My biggest concern is the parking along the triangle, the proposed parking along the triangle, and then along Cove Road and Margin Street. Because it's affecting the sight of traffic both ways. And those coming on Cove Road to take a right or a left, they're now have to, there's a crosswalk there. So now they're probably not going to stop at the crosswalk. They're going to go beyond the crosswalk because now they can't see. Because there's cars along that Elm Street side of the triangle. The other two is now Cove Road also. Years ago, there was a small, not a small, but a six foot high fence that went around the curvature. Now the building comes out to the sidewalk. So their line of sight is completely blinded coming around that, that, that turn. And the same thing coming down Margin Street with their proposed parking, that's already narrow as it is. And adding parking with that road curvature and it's a blind hill, it's going to make things even worse. So I, I would not recommend the parking on Margin Street or the Cove Road or along the triangle on Elm Street at this time. Because again, that is a very busy road for us. Last year, we did twenty-three hundred calls to service and we use this avenue or this, this roadway to hit south three A corridor, Beechwood, the Hillside, the Veterans Lot, the high school, south Main Street to the Citroeline. So they say out of the twenty-three hundred calls of service, I bet half of our runs come through this, this part of town. So, and the other thing too, my concern too, was they added some bump outs, curb bump outs in front of eighty-seven Elm Street and in front of ninety-seven Elm Street. And that's even narrowing the road even some more. And I would request that the perform a sweat path analysis report to us, the fire department, to see if that's feasible for us to travel through there. It's in the fire code that we can request it. And I've requested it to the board that they perform this sweat path analysis. Because looking at that, when you narrow that turn for us, now when we come down through Elm Street and we try to make a right onto Summer, we may be going into oncoming traffic coming down Summer Street. So that's another hazard. So those are my concerns.
And one last question for you, Chief. What are your thoughts on paving now as compared to waiting with respect to the wear and tear on your engines?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd love to pave now. Two years ago, had to put a whole new front end on our ladder truck, fourteen thousand dollars. If we keep running up and down Elm Street, I'd hate to see what the cost is to put new front ends and the engines and the ambulances. So the sooner the better, it'd be great.
Yes.
Can everybody hear me? No, all right, I'll, I'll talk. I need to use these, I don't need to. We've been back and forth on Elm Street for a very, very long period of time. We've had different major development projects come and go and then ones being built as we know now. And everybody has wonderful ideas about what we can do. But we're coming right down to it. Number one, we don't have unlimited money. The, every time I look at it, I come back to pave what we have, do it right, so we're not tearing our cars apart, so the police can get in there. The parking lots that the chief was referring to, we actually, the Select Board recommended removing them. They're right on the curve there. If you look at that, you'll see it clearly blocks your sightline. That just creates unnecessary danger. At a certain point in, in public affairs, public business, you have to get on with doing stuff. You know, the perfect, you know, is the enemy of getting things done. We can pave Elm Street, we can get it done, it can be safe. It can start knocking your cars apart, like stop knocking your cars apart. Some of the other questions about how it's working, it will work the way now. Putting the bump outs, you'll see those green things. That looks a wonderful thing and it really is. But the fact is, that takes parking spaces. So I think what we have works. It's time to start, you know, reinventing wheel, get a very practical, durable solution to a traffic problem. The rest of the town has all kinds of issues going on as well. The town has to be fair to everybody. We put Elm Street right on front to get it done. So I think a very practical way to get it done is the way for, for this board to do it.
So right now, are there any neighbors that have anything to say? All right.
Hi, Kimberly Riley, thirty-two Elm Court. I think a lot of our neighbors are just seeing this for the first time. And, you know, having lived in the neighborhood for eighteen years, raised kids, pushed baby carriages, worried about the kids riding their bikes down to the sailing club and learning how to ride, pushing elderly grandparents around. This area is so tight that putting the parking in front of the new condo development on the Cove is, is just like, it's unbelievable to consider because it's already so dangerous. Already, you know, when you're, when you're living there, you're seeing every day the traffic patterns. And even when there was a hotel and weddings going on, there wasn't a problem with parking on Elm Street. There were always parking, there was always parking available. I mean, where you get congested is closer to the, the harbor and towards the Atlantica. The, the parking along the triangle concerns me a lot too because when I'm driving there ten times a day, looking over my shoulder, even when the flags are in the green over Memorial Day, you, you can't see the traffic coming. So it's, that's already, in my opinion, dangerous to have the flags there. So you have parking spots there and it just creates a, a blind spot. The kids, you know, this is our thoroughway for the kids in the summer. So it's, it's very concerning. I completely support Justin's views on that area and also considering, we're talking about access for the town, like a bike pathway along, along that curve versus more parking. And I also think that, you know, when the, when the condos were presented to the town, it was a loss in terms of, you know, the, the view and all of that. So they were going to open it up to, to the Elm Street so you could see the, the harbor. And, you know, I think many of you can probably see now with the elevation, you, you can't really even see the harbor. And now to put, to put cars in front blocks the views of water and boats like entirely. But, you know, safety really is my primary concern. I, I do think that it would be a shame to end this whole project by just paving Elm Street. You know, there, there is a need to improve the access with the sidewalks. And I think that if we could consider widening the sidewalks so that, you know, people could actually get through so that the trees weren't growing up through all of them, they're, they're so narrow. I think that, that, that would be great. I think it's a, it's a waste of money to just put all of that money into paving and not improving the sidewalks at least.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else?
David Lord, nineteen Elm Street. I agree with a lot of what you just said there. I, I sit there and I, when I work during the day, I look out at Brook and Elm. And I just see the kids and the, the mothers with the kids coming down Elm Street all day long on their bikes. And I, the, all the obstructed views that this would create is a concern for me. The main thing that I think about when we're going to redo this is, is basically widening the sidewalks. Because anywhere you cut it, the little kids are going to be on the sidewalk riding their bikes. Doesn't matter if you put a bike lane in or not, they're going to be on the sidewalks and they're very narrow. The best thing I think we could do is widen that sidewalk a little bit and repave it. Little concerned about, I saw the plan for concrete curbs instead of granite curbs. I don't know if that is part of this, part of the repaving. If they just repaved Elm Street, would they put the same curbs in or would they put concrete curbs in?
Let's ask our town engineer.
Our town engineer.
So the majority is a raise and reset of existing curbing, granite curbing?
My call.
So just so everyone else can hear, Mr. Joyce said it would be a raise and reset of existing curbing. I see the granite curbing.
Okay. The other thing with the parking, if, I don't know if anybody's pulled, trying to pull out of Brook Street onto South Main right by Dependable Cleaners there. Somebody's going to get killed. You can't see to the right. You can't see the left because of the parking. And every time I pull out there, you have to pull all the way out before you can see what's coming. People come flying down that hill. And they're basically creating the exact same situation right there trying to turn onto Cove Street if they were to put that parking in. The other thing that my wife wanted me to mention.
Better mention it.
Got a string from my thing.
Believe it or not, here it is. I'm going to sum it up. That's a lot of green to be maintained by Cohasset. And already, I don't think they can keep up with the current green that we have going on. And I'm not sure how that would end up. I assume those trees and that grass would be maintained by the town? Those are new trees, aren't they? So, and then on top of that, if we ever get snow again, I don't know where it's going to go when they plow.
Can I ask one last question? Do we maintain the coasts?
So we vote 52 acres of fields and the grass chips, you see a majority of the roadways are usually maintained by the property owners or if it's uncapped, we'll hit it once a month, but not on a regular frequency like common or milky or any of those.
So our responsibility?
Correct.
And, sorry.
And I'm sorry, sir, we can't have crosstalk because of the recording. But you were saying.
I'm going to be wrapping up here. So just in summary, I would like to see the sidewalks widened. I'd love to see the power lines go underground. If we want to try to beautify Elm Street, that would be the biggest gain. And I forgot my third point, but I think I already said.
And when you said sidewalks widened, is there a particular side you'd recommend, one versus the other?
Definitely the across from the fire, not the fire station side.
The one on the south side?
Yeah.
I just wanted to confirm.
I rarely see people biking down the other sidewalk. All the kids come down and, you know, John mentioned this was one of the crosswalks. That crosswalk at Brook and Elm, which is right where I watch, is inside the stop. There's even a stop sign there. So most cars stop well beyond the crosswalk. And it's blind. You have kids coming down that hill and then cars coming right through. It's really dangerous, but.
So you're talking about the south side, sir? Yep.
South side.
Widen the south side.
Yeah, widen the south side.
Thanks so much.
We've got one person on. Are you taking questions on Zoom?
We'll let this gentleman, you're first.
Thank you.
Joe, you get preference.
He's here.
I identify myself. Joe Coggin, 57 Elm. I just want to clarify because things, we're talking about a bunch of different things. But I want to give you what primarily many of our neighbors have been talking about and what was one of the two remaining options back when they spent two years of Zoom meetings and with the committee before that sunset. So I'm in favor, we're in favor, my wife and I are in favor of paving the road as it is from a parking standpoint. This plan that was on the TV eliminated parking on the fire station side. Well, if you're not putting parking around the Cove, then that is going to be needed for people who are going into Hingham, I mean, sorry, to the harbor. Also, they may not use it as much as the south side, but the north side residents do use that parking. So that's going to be pushed across the street to where we are. And when they took the front of our lawns in the 70s to widen Elm Street, it kind of left us with short driveways. So we really depend on that street parking there. As for, I know that the original thought was having a parking plan for people who were going to the harbor from the village. But I don't know the last time you tried to find a parking space in the village. Even the parking, you know, lot out back is getting difficult. So to answer your question, G, what we would like is, we understand that the sidewalks are four feet generally. So if we went to a six-foot sidewalk, even, so that, so there's no bumps from the roots and all that on both sides, then I think they would probably see more people biking on the other side as well. And what I'd like to see, John and the chief, would be talking to the sailing clubs and the swim clubs and the parents and saying, hey, we know why you're riding your bikes on the sidewalks because you've got big cars going fast, cell phones and all that. But when you come across a pedestrian, get off your bike and let them walk by. Because we do have 60 Elm, which is elderly housing. And they used to walk up and down a lot more than they do now. Maybe, maybe that's a part of it. So we're looking at fixing the sidewalks, paving the street, leaving the parking as it is, keeping that nice corridor view. And I hate the word corridor, to name it. But keeping that nice view of the harbor intact. So, thank you.
Justin, if you want to promote Mr. McGoldrick.
It's Mr. George McGoldrick.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Board.
Hello.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So George McGoldrick, 107 Border Street, Cohasset. I'm wearing the hat tonight as a representative of the Cohasset Hospitality Partners. As most of you know, the Cohasset Hospitality Partners was formed after the town decided to rezone the harbor front area. So we looked at the opportunity to come in and create a public park along the waterfront and build some housing in order to afford to create this wonderful community for the town of Cohasset. There's been a lot of misconception about whether we have been promoting this parking. We, the Cohasset Hospitality Partners, has not been involved at all in this parking study. We've not, we've been aware of it, but we've not been involved in it because of the misconception that we're trying to get more parking. Much the, the actual issue is the fact that we're creating a half-acre public park for the town. And so if there's any parking available, we would think it'd be for the town new park rather than for the condominium. So I want people to understand that we're not looking for additional parking, but we are creating this new half-acre park. And we're hoping that people come to it. So there should be parking available for it. Regarding the safety of the parking that you're talking about, I would assume it'd be a safety study versus people's individual perception of what's happening. Because, for example, the bicycles that are now going around the old hotel can now go through the new park and not have to deal with Cove Street or anything else. So rather than people's perception of what could or could happen, I'd suggest a safety study as to whether or not the parking there should or should not be rather than what people think may or may not happen. The new park that we're creating is actually going to make it safety, safer for all those kids riding their bikes over to the Cohasset Sailing Club. In regards to the whole Elm Street, we're 100% in favor of paving Elm Street to the extent that we've created a plan for our construction to move down Summer Street and not even impact Elm Street. So I think that we should pave Elm Street as soon as possible. But the whole parking issue along, the whole, excuse me, the whole parking issue along Elm Street and Marg Street should be done on a safety study, not on what people think or think might not happen. Because by introducing the new park, we're actually making it safer for walkers and bicyclists to go along the harbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. And quick question for you before you leave, if you don't mind. With respect to the heavy equipment coming in and out of CHP, do you have a sense of when the trucks with the steel beams will be sort of substantially complete if we were to look at paving Elm Street as soon as possible?
So again, the steel structure, the steel is not going down Elm Street. Never was. We've told you that for a year. I don't know why you think it still has been. So it's never gone down Elm Street?
Yesterday, so maybe it was not your truck, another truck, but I just wanted to confirm.
In any event, so we're now about a month away from having any of the heavy steel equipment coming down. But again, we have a plan that's been approved by the town that we're not using Elm Street for the heavy equipment.
Okay, and so since we're all here, the plan is you're coming through Summer Street and you're not engaged really at the triangle, it sounds like, including Cove and on both sides of the triangle if we were to also pave that?
Correct. We're using Summer Street as the access for all the equipment. Correct.
Okay. And I have seen a lot of, I just wanted to confirm because obviously that's on our mind too. We don't want to have a brand-new road and then have to deal with, you know, issues really too.
No, we were in front of you and when Mr. Creighton was chairman last year, we were in front of you and disclosed the plan that we had come up with and got approval by all the town. Correct.
All right, thank you. Are there any other online questions, comments? No. Anyone else in the audience?
It allows you to climb Elm Street. You know, I think, this has been going on for a couple of years now with the whole corridor committee. And there's a, a lot of people have a lot of great ideas and want to do a lot of things. If there was an unlimited budget, we could do it all, but we don't. And I think if you boil it down, we don't need the extra green strips. There's plenty of existing mature trees on the street. It looks fine. I think what we should really be doing is repaving the road. And I think the one change I think I would propose is actually widening the sidewalk on the south side to six feet if we can. The vast majority of people, walkers and kids riding their bikes, use the south side sidewalk and it could be a little wider. I'd love to see it on the north side as well. But after taking another look at it, the poles are about a foot in from the curb. And that would put the poles in the middle of the sidewalk, which is kind of a useless exercise. So I would ask that we move forward in the interest of getting it done, spending the least amount of money and keeping this as possible.
Mr. Sergeant?
Thank you. David Moore, 37 Elm Street. Thanks for your time tonight. Very insightful. Just a couple of observations. As we sent you a letter last on Sunday, I guess we was a little bit surprised and disappointed that the residents weren't included in this conversation, especially as we've been involved for the last two to three years. We hope that was an oversight, if it's intentional. That's just one point. We talked about safety a lot. I had a simple idea, it could be years ago on the Zoom calls, is let's make Elm Street 20 miles an hour. To me, it's the simplest, quickest way. Make it safe on our street and enforce it. There's a police station officers. Just ask the police chief to have cars down there. So I like the idea of extending the sidewalks, cycle pavements, resurfing the road and make it 20. Make it 20 all the way down to Atlantica. You know, make the town a lot safer. Thanks, everyone.
All right, any other comments? Before, sorry, I'm just trying to get everyone at least one. Matthew, want to come on?
Mary Kendall, 49 Elm Street. I've been on the street for 45 years. I, so I'm going to take a little bit of a different tack because everybody else seems to be in agreement. Seems to be a fair amount of consensus for what we want to happen on the street. From an historic perspective, it was back in 1956, that street used to be called Chip Cove Lane and, which is much more evocative if we're all going for more, you know, pleasant and authentic type of a, type of an environment. So I would rather than repeat what's already been said, I would throw out that it would be great to change the name of the street back to Chip Cove Lane as there are no more Elm trees with us anymore.
It's a very good idea.
Any other suggestions or comments?
I think I would go with Chip Cove has got this over with.
Doing it, Jack.
I am Dan Wagner. I live at 69 Elm Street. And I think the question that we're seeking to answer tonight is sort of pave now or pave later. Am I, like, that's the first question to answer. And if that's the case, I'm in favor, as many other folks who live on Elm Street, of let's just pave it and get it done. And also in favor of bumping the sidewalks out of there on the south side and see the traffic jams and folks reviewing on and off the sidewalk trying to navigate cyclists and strollers and stuff like that. Moreover, I think it would be really helpful as we contemplate investments like a different plan for Elm Street or other plans to make sure that we include folks that live on those streets. It insights that folks who don't live on the streets may not have. And they're also stakeholders in this sort of special way on the streets. And so anytime we're planning big overhauls or major changes to things, it would be really wise to bring those folks into the process early. I think it was a reasonably good effort to do that when we were talking about Elm Street over the preceding years. It was stopped. But like many folks, I was kind of surprised a couple of days ago to find out that we were perhaps making a decision about, like profoundly changing the plan that I thought we'd all sort of coalesced around. So in summary, if the option is sort of pave now or defer for something more complex, I'm certainly in favor of paving now and bumping out the sidewalk at least on the south side. And then generally, as we think about making investments like this around town and doing things that are like meaningful changes, let's just bring the folks who are on those streets into the conversation or at least invite them. People may not have an opinion or want to participate, but that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you. We probably have time for one more comment and then we'll turn to slide board discussion. Any last comments, Mr. Doleman, sir?
Thank you. I'm Ralph Doleman, sir. I'm 111 Atlantica Ave. I think it's worthwhile to say what's positive about this because we've heard a lot of negative. Okay, so what is the plan exactly? The plan is to take the street, which is now 40 feet wide, and to narrow it to 32 feet. Of that, six feet would remain for the sidewalk on the south side and six feet would remain for green space also on the south side adjacent to the road. Now, why would you do, why would you do that? Well, traditionally in this town, we have always put green space adjacent to the roads because pedestrians would like to be separated from the roads. And that is true throughout Massachusetts. There are almost no exceptions. If we were to put sidewalks directly on the road, it's a radical change. It's an exception. And the one place where you can all go see it is on Sawyer Street from 3A back to, what is it, the top of that?
Fair Oaks.
Fair Oaks Lane. That's what it looks like. So if we actually put curbs in there and we make a six-foot sidewalk on the south side of the street and no green space, that's what you're going to get. That's exactly what you're going to get. Okay. Number two. Number two, the trees actually came down in '73, as it turns out, and at that time it was considered a tragedy. And today it continues to be a tragedy. And in the three different master plans, all of them have said restore, restore the trees, restore the green space, restore some safety. And what about safety in this plan? It turns out that what we have done with this plan is tried to make a point where you could actually have kids cross the road at no more than 24 feet. And it's in multiple places. It's Summer Street, at the Legion, it's on Elm Street, where the kids gather on the other side of Elm Court for the buses, and it's on the south side. All of those changes would be removed by in fact leaving this a 40-foot-wide street. If you want to actually increase the sidewalk, the six-foot sidewalk that you want, it is not so simple. There are catch basins there. In other words, you can't do a six-foot sidewalk on the south side without moving the catch basins. So that $650,000 may be right, but it may or may not include the additional cost of actually putting in 18-inch pipe and moving the catch basins. That has to happen. So that's not what you think. And finally, we have a grant proposal, which will pay for the whole, the whole project, potentially coming in October. If you reject this proposal, the grant is tied to the new proposal. The grant can't be used, is gone. So instead of saving the town money, we're going to cost the town another $650,000 or $700,000 to do this plan, which is much more difficult than you think. So for an awful lot of reasons, whether there are some adjustments you can make that might make it better, I fully understand why the people on the north side really want their parking. I do understand that, maybe something can be adjusted. But one thing you don't want to have, in my personal view, and maybe others can disagree with me, I can't imagine six feet of asphalt on the south side, another, maybe you call it 38 feet, whatever it might be, 38 feet of asphalt in the middle of the road, and another five feet of asphalt on the other side. I can't even imagine on a hot day the radiation and the misery associated with a, with a road that's practically all asphalt from end to end and no green. And I don't know anywhere anyone would consider doing anything so horrendous, and it was always considered horrendous when it was first done. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Ralph. Now, with the grant, all right, that does not mean that we would have to incorporate the parking around the island or around Cove Street or on going up. I want to be clear on that.
No.
Have to clear it in front of the new hotel condo going up to Whitehead, so that parking...
That goes away, you know, it was a paint line. It was a paint line, for heaven's sake, yes. There is, I think there's a bump out, there is a bump out there. The bump out would have to, yeah, the bump out at the tip of Sydney Square Park would probably have to be pulled back. That means we not, we don't touch Sydney Square Park at all. The grant would not be rejected for that small change, so. But it is, that grant is entirely, it's entirely tied to that, to that proposal. You lose $950,000 and you end up putting in 650,000 or 700,000 new money from the town? That is not good economics. So anyway, anyway, anything else?
I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, yeah, but there were paintings.
About that part, I connect.
Yep.
Close view corridor.
All right, we need to start moving along to decision time. In terms of next steps, select board members, anyone want to go first with their thoughts?
I think it starts with Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian, did you want to say something? No?
Brian, can we, we have a couple of cost estimates on, I mean, maybe incorporating what these folks have said about extending the sidewalk six feet. I know we're throwing some stuff out there that's new tonight, the south side, and paving now compared to what we're doing if we follow this, the plan. That's all, just, just.
Yes, so the, either the time has merits, not of a gnostic as to which one it is, but we, what I'd like to do is to get at least the road built and a level course done for winter so it's drivable and it's, you know, we can plow well. But the, the south side, you know, the six-foot sidewalk request and not moving the curb, I don't know if that's feasible, maybe go up and look at it again, because right now we have a four-foot sidewalk with trees and a lot of people noted the roots are coming up. So I don't know if you could do a six, six foot without moving the curb. If you do move the curb out, Ralph was right, then you get into the catch basins. You move that catch basin out, you're into a new drainage structure, and that's where a lot of the costs come from. So that $310,000 that we were talking about was basically just the road surface, milling overlay, keeping the curbs where it is. If we were resurfacing, resurfacing the sidewalks and not moving the curbs, we could maximize as much as possible, but I don't know if we could get a six feet without taking, you know, sort of survey property lines and.
My last question, if we went with the original plan, could we wrap it up? We're going up to Whitehead. Could we wrap it up around the island down to where the construction crews come up summer and into, we could wrap the island and stop right at where they enter off Summer Street, right?
With the milling overlay?
Milling overlay and paving and just cover the island, as I said, wrap the island, wrap Cove Street connected to, sorry, going to Whitehead.
Yeah, margin.
So we could wrap around Whitehead. Thanks.
All right, any thoughts, Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, as I said, as I said earlier, I think it's time to forward with this. It would be interesting if, while you're, while you're there, Brian, if you could extend that sidewalk, if it's possible, while you're doing it, I'm sure you'll find if it can, and maybe if it doesn't have to be as wide as possible all the way through, but where you can. And I have confidence in your engineering ability to be able to figure out that. But I think for the board, we've hashed this back and forth. I think we've heard very clearly from, from all the neighbors here, there's time to get this done. So I think that we should move to get this done.
Mr. Flex, Ms. Mar?
First, I just want to acknowledge the hard work that went into developing the plan that we have in front of us tonight. But I think we're hearing loud and clear from the folks who live on that street that it's not the plan that they're comfortable with. So we're also hearing from the chief that we really need to pave that street for a variety of reasons. So I think where that lands me is we should go ahead and pave the street on a relatively quick basis to make sure we get that done in time for the winter, God willing, we'll have snow. But the existing plan is something we have to take another look at. I think that's something that we have to do with the explicit engagement of the people who live on the street, and we have to make sure that there's a clear intent to look at things like the sidewalks, the landscaping, the lighting, and how we connect the harbor to the village. Because I do think the harbor is going to be an important part of Cohasset. I think it would be in everyone's best interest to get the two connected. And I hope that's not diminishing the efforts that went into what was presented to us tonight. But I think we need to evolve that to make sure we have something the community can support.
Ms. Mar, would you like to win?
I'm good.
I apologize, I neglected to mention including looking at the name of the street and the speed limit when we engage the community.
Chief, the speed limit is 25 now, right?
I don't know, I can't ask that question.
And the gentleman has a very good point.
I don't know, that's not my style of the house.
True, too.
Don't we have a townwide?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, unless, unless otherwise noted.
The question is, is it otherwise noted? Yes, Jay?
If you're considering voting on anything this evening, it would be great to vote on the decision between whether we're just going to do a milling overlay of the roadway itself, or is it going to expand upon that to actually look into evaluation of the sidewalks. But even regardless of the sidewalks, we still need to have a plan, the town needs to have a plan as far as stripage goes with creating safety measures. Because after the road's paved, you still need to put yellow and white lines all in there. So decision on the parking would be final.
So I would just weigh in and I would say, Chris, I agree with you, and I guess Jack as well, on moving forward, getting it done. And I think that if we actually want to get it done, we need to start making decisions, including whether we're going to do parking at the Cove. I don't, I think we should leave all the parking as is. I think we just leave it as is. It's working, it's working for the neighborhood. I am concerned about the safety measures. My kids are on that school bus, always trying to take the left onto Elm Street, and that's a really tight corner. And I walk it every day with my dog, and there's definitely, there's, there's, there's still room for parking, and you know, the neighborhood pretty actively uses the parking. I did like the idea of the trees. I thought that that's a nice addition and brings a nice aesthetical look that said, given the cost and the neighborhood concerns, for me, it's more important just to get it done. I think the thing that I'm sort of mulling in my mind is it would be nice to try to extend the south side sidewalks. I am concerned we're going to get caught in an expensive circle of how to do it and delay and all of that. I'd rather just say, and I can see from some nods in the, in the audience, that let's keep ourselves on a pretty tight timeline to figure this out, like within the next few, two weeks. And we'll just do, from an engineering standpoint, let's see if we can figure it out. If we can do it for a minimal extra cost, great, but like, we only have so much money to actually get everything done. Let's just get it done. It's important to our emergency personnel and equipment, I think. So I would be in favor of let's pave it as is, let's also pave the sidewalks, see where we can expand, but if it's cost prohibitive or adds on extra time, that would slow us from getting it done. Let's not, let's not add parking near Cove Street or the Triangle. Keep the parking as is. I like the idea of adding a bike lane around Cove Street. Yes, I take the point that there will be additional, hopefully a captain's walk around the harbor, and we will likely not allow people to bike around it because people will be walking. And so I do think that there's going to be, you know, additional need to have more safety, the sharrows on the road in those spots. And so I think we should just make the decision now. We've gotten a lot of feedback. I feel comfortable moving forward without a safety study. I trust our chief and our neighbors who live this neighborhood every day and know the safety implications very well. So that's where I would leave it. I, I would be inclined to entertain a motion along the lines of what I suggested unless someone else has another similar equally, or if not better idea.
So that might be separate, just to make it clear.
Yeah, so, okay, so I suppose if we, if we were to do a motion, I would suggest one for all of Elm Street to repave as is, including to do the sidewalks with the money we currently have. We'll see Mr. Joyce if we can do extending the sidewalks for a relatively minimal amount. If it's not feasible, then let's replace the sidewalks as is, keep all the parking as is, including near Cove Road and the north side of the Triangle. We'll add the sharrows, the bike lane around Cove over to Margin because we know all the kids are using that area. And that would be my motion if I were to make it, unless you want to move, Paul, on that? I don't know if you want to amend that at all.
I would basically parrot the chair's motion and make the same motion, but I would solidify the fact that there's no parking on the Cove Street going up to Border Street, border, I apologize, to Whitehead, and on the island.
Take the entire.
Same way, the entire island, circling around the entire island up to the entryway where the CHP trucks are rolling in off Summer.
Second? And I want to hear you say that again.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, just to confirm for the record, because this is, there's a lot of, a lot of layers of that. That's a motion to pave all of Elm Street plus all of the island, and we're not going to do parking at Cove Street or the north side of the Triangle or on the way to Whitehead. We are going to do bike lanes, i.e. sharrows, on the Cove Street on the way to the yacht club, where we know there's lots of kids. And we're going to look at trying to extend out the sidewalk within reason to, on the south side. And if we can't do it, we will put on the agenda for August 8th, just so everyone knows. We'll give a report about what can and can't be done unless Mr. Joyce tells us he needs more time to figure that out from an engineering standpoint.
Why just the south side? The north side has accessibility issues that hasn't been addressed.
Could I suggest that we have Mr. Joyce look at both sides and the potential for expanding both sidewalks? And Gene, if I could clarify, when you said pave the island, you mean pave around the island?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a very long motion, I think, we've covered the bases.
What would happen if we won the grant and not hold her?
We're, it's, I've.
We won't be eligible for it anymore. So if we don't do the plan with the trees, then we will not be eligible to use the money connected with that. And right now, I believe the grant we saw was for $800,000, and right now the price tag is coming in around 1.1, but it's probably going to be higher because as, as Jay said, we have to move the center of the road, so we could be looking at 1.5. So we're still going to have to put in a lot of money at the end of the day because the grant only will get us so far with the proposed plan. And so if we have concerns about that, it, I mean, that's, those are the considerations financially, right, in terms of, we're still going to have to put a lot more money into the plan that proposes the trees. Before we just take a vote.
Oh, wait there. Jay, too.
I just want to address the grant a little bit. I don't think that the grant actually completely goes away. I mean, I would consider this like an emergency fix. Could be a permit, it's going to be a permit for years, but it's a fix to a roadway that is in dire need. And so if we just did the roadway itself and the grant did come through, I feel that in the springtime, if the board decided that they wanted to revert back to the plan and actually mimic the plan, the grant application money would still be available.
With resident approval.
That's your job.
So I, before, before we vote, and I, I'm happy that we went through this, this process tonight. I take responsibility for myself that I didn't ask Jay more questions when he presented to us. I appreciate every resident who wrote to us or called us and all of your thoughts and your concerns, and they're very valid. I completely agree with citizen and resident engagement, especially when it's in your neighborhood and not, it's not a corridor. I'd like to thank Jay and his whole committee, too. They put an awful lot of hard work into, to the plan to do what they thought was, you know, in, in the best interest of the charge that the select board at the time gave them. So I don't want to minimize their efforts in that. It was a lot of work that they did with a lot of thought, lots of thought. None of it was, you know, cavalier in their thinking, and this is, this is what government is about, so listening to the people who are going to be affected and, and making ultimately, at the end of the day, the right, the right decision. And I'm glad, Jay, you just commented that we might still be able to make some of the other improvements if the grant comes through, that, according to that plan. So thank you all very much for your input.
Just want to follow up to Ellen. As a member of that committee, I just want to assure everybody on Elm Street that was no mal intent in looking to pull one over on your eyes or any of those lines. We're a new committee. Jay's been a fantastic chair, and we were just looking at options, looked at the old options for Elm Street. It wasn't to try to just steamroll something through. It was just looking at the plans, looking at grants. So just thank you so much for coming in, voicing all your opinion, because they do matter. Again, it's a new committee, we're getting off the ground, and we're looking at all the high-pressure points on roads, sidewalks, all over town. And Elm Street, you know, is really kind of a pinch point, it's an important connectivity, and what we thought we were doing was for the best at the point in time. So thank you so much, so give us some room to grow. So give us some room to grow.
Do you have anything to say?
I was going to say, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Oh, well, that's what I was going to say.
Call, call the question.
Seeing the resolution, so I will call the question. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one's opposed?
You're done.
Would you like to say anything? I'm sorry, I feel like I may be disruptive.
No, I just was going to tell you to call.
Okay, okay.
Well, thank you all, including those who spent a lot of time working on a variety of plans and providing input. We appreciate it. And like I said, select board's schedule is August 8th, August 22nd. As soon as we have more information, we'll continue to provide it, including on the sidewalk, the ability to move the sidewalk and, you know, paving that area. And so continue to look at the agendas. You can sign up for agendas. You get them automatically as soon as they're posted if you sign up on our website. If anyone has questions, they can email me. But we will continue to put that on the agenda, so that way you can get updates. Okay, we are, you know, we did have one more issue relating to roads, resiliency. And I'm not going to use this anymore.
All right, so on the resiliency issue, we are, and this is probably a question for Brian. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Resiliency, okay, thank you. So, oh, Chris, hey. Fancy seeing you here.
I've been all in all time. There was no reason to interrupt.
So, Chris, actually, perfect timing. With respect to resiliency, I understand that we may be looking for resiliency grants for our roads. So I think it's important that whoever is applying for those grants, if it's Montana or someone else, has to connect with the roads and sidewalk committee. That we shouldn't be applying for those without having those guys have feedback.
We're actually awaiting word imminently on a very large, well, pretty large MVP, next phase grant, which will take us further into this whole conversation.
Okay, Massachusetts Vulnerability Program?
The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness.
Okay, new vulnerability was middle.
We were a pioneer, we were one of the first people, communities in. So it's like a phase two or phase three.
Because I think, I mean, we just, I don't want to say learned a valuable lesson, but I think we all feel that, you know, as we go forward with significant road changes, we have to find a way to also better flag to the community far in advance what those may be. And resiliency, particularly talking about raising roads, is a huge issue because that redirects the water flow, right? If we raised Elm Street, all of the water would go into those neighbors' properties. So I just want to be real careful about what we do and how we do it and make sure we're fully read into that because of, I mean, it's really important. I'm, I'm not minimizing the need to do it, but I also want to make sure that we're including our roads and sidewalk committee and updating our neighbors' appropriations. So while we're on roads and sidewalks, so will the vote we just took preclude the projects that the committee presented to us earlier?
Which one, Ellen?
I had just, I asked Justin to send the presentation because I didn't take good notes.
The master plan information?
No, no, the Sidewalk Safety and Connectivity Committee, when they were here, they... I think the short answer is no, Ellen. Okay, Smith Place and Cushing Road, Margin Street, Elm Street to Atlantic and Atlantic Margin. So the $700,000 that they have, that we kind of just put 636 into Elm Street, we still have 154, 182. So that's 336 and another 130, another 460 to do these projects. Okay.
We'll be at least starting them and we're doing, you know, again, looking at the sidewalks right now. Like each one of us is going around presenting to Jay at different points, saying where we... But to answer your question, like, for instance, if we want to get started on stuff, maybe the answer is yes, we can.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so recall that when we looked at the plan originally a few weeks ago, we had said, hey, let's, you know, like, turn to this early 2024, see what happens with the October grant. And if the October grant doesn't come through, we know we still have, you know, 700.
It's like 1.4 million or something like that.
Yeah, because we had a lot of money, thanks to capital, to start making some serious progress on roads and sidewalks. All right, all right. Let's turn to long-term finance planning real quick. Sorry, Mike, I know you waited a while probably for this and it's probably going to be pretty short, all things considered at this point.
You're looking kind of lonely up there.
I know.
Why did they all leave you?
So I just wanted to give a really quick summary because I know we've been giving summaries of all of the progress towards our select board goals. So the working group has been meeting a lot every week for what feels like a lot of hours. We've been, with the help of Chris and Jennifer, really trying to track down information, including, for example, looking at all of our history of spending, including our capital stabilization funding, our annual funding for capital items over the last 10 years, how they were allocated, whether they were coming out of free cash, to try to figure out what our historic trends are and what we need to consider, including as we think about upcoming stabilization funds. We also looked at free cash over the last 10 years to see what our historic trends were there. We're starting to look at the operating budgets, including five-year projections, again, to try to track what we're doing on that front. And we most recently really turned to, with the help of Chris and Jennifer, looking at other community data, specifically what we consider quote peer community data, but also geographic peers. So for example, Hangum may not be a quote peer, so to speak, from like a population and other factors, but they are a competing community. So when people think about, where am I going to move on the south shore? They're probably thinking, Hangum, Cohasset, maybe New Orwell, maybe Situit, maybe Hull. And so we're also trying to get a sense of all of the different communities surrounding us. And there are some regional variations from what we're seeing, including, for example, you know, on the North Shore, it looks like they're either having a different approach with respect to sewer, whether they're on the MWRA system, which is lowering their costs in a way that is very striking compared to south shore community costs when you look at water and sewer. And the reason that we're focusing on that is we're really trying to look at these different communities to figure out sort of, what's the all-in municipal bill? As, as much as we, you know, sort of reasonably can compare apples to apples, looking at, for example, what's the all-in for your taxes plus your CPA surcharge, plus your water, plus your sewer? And what does that look like? And what does that look like as a component of the average income, the medium home value? Again, to try to get a sense of what Cohasset folks are paying relative to peer communities, including those with similar incomes, similar property valuations, to try to get a sense of how much more can we reasonably ask our citizens to pay when looking at other communities? Where do we sit? For example, we know within now 14 peer communities that we have the lowest debt exclusion amount. We're 13 out of 14 because we have debt that's about to roll off as compared to communities right next door that have, you know, huge debt exclusions that they're working through. But they also have new and better things in exchange. And so, you know, we're trying to consider a whole bunch of different factors, ultimately to get to the end goal of providing our citizens with a lot of background information to help inform all of these decisions, but also looking at what makes sense as we come upon Fall Town meeting, as we look at stabilization funds layered on top of upcoming expenses we may have, such as debt exclusions from municipal buildings, potentially for schools, you know? How do we try to manage those different needs as we move along a very long timeline? So making progress and still aiming for that August preliminary report. It might be pretty preliminary, but I want to give just a very brief update. And, you know, the more clarity we get on our side in terms of what we actually want to spend money on and need to spend money on, the easier it is to do the modeling and the projections because then we have real numbers to work through instead of just using straw men. So that's really helpful. And we've been trying to track, you know, different potential projects that might be out there and, and think about what those numbers may look like. So that's where we are. Just want to give an update, see if anyone had a question. Yes, Mike?
Just to pick up on what you mentioned about a preliminary report coming in August. What is the nature of that report? When in August are you thinking?
It will be, that's a good question in terms of when exactly it will be. The nature of the report is that it will be relatively summary. It will be a 10-page report, probably with some appendices. It's going to be a draft, so it's going to have a brief history for folks. It's going to have historic information about how we spent cash funding, capital funding, free cash. It's going to have information about our past operating budgets as well as our future projections. It's going to have information about how we, the sources of our revenue. It's going to have information about our pension and health insurance costs, our history with Prop 2.5, our projected major capital projects, our peer community information, and it's probably going to start to have recommendations. So it's going to be, you know, just, again, try to do brief summaries as we go through with some of the more dense material, probably as appendices. Any questions from the board? Okay. All right, 7:45, let's see, it's 9:05, okay. The last thing on, under select board goals is board summary slash outreach relating to upcoming Fall Town meeting. And this sort of dovetails with the upcoming special town meeting where I know we have a little bit of chicken and egg going on right now with trying to figure out, finalizing some pretty big-picture decisions. I think that the sooner we can come to some resolution on what we're going to move forward at town meeting, then we should start to have a plan for outreach, both through newspapers and through forums. And so, Chris, I'm sort of looking at you with Fields and Rec because that's probably the most advanced. The, you know, the anchors reached out to me about doing articles and I think, you know, we could do something as a select board, trying to push information out.
Then you made me a little nervous when you said we might need to think about moving forward because Michelle and I were just talking earlier today about...
Oh, we should, we should move forward.
Getting a forum on the calendar for potentially August 2nd, which I realize is very close, but we're confident that we can get the word out, we can get the right people engaged to start the conversation about what we might move forward with for Fall Town meeting. So a lot of ideas flying around. I don't want to put out a proposal just yet, but that's the point of the forum, is to start getting feedback from the town, put some ideas out there and see what people think. So as early as August 2nd, we could start formally collecting that feedback.
And you are moving forward on the prior Field and Rec proposal? Is that what the proposal that you're getting ideas on is?
That will be part of it.
Okay. And Beachwood Playground?
Yes.
Okay. I think we should also add in water filtration systems at various local parks as much as possible.
The bottle fillers?
Yeah, the bottle fillers. We've had requests for that and that would nicely dovetail with, you know, kids have water bottles, but they might not have water. They have them at the schools, but not necessarily at, you know, some of the other areas.
And dovetailing with our earlier conversation, I've seen them where you can both fill a water bottle or directly take a drink.
Yep, yeah.
We can work on that.
Yeah, I think if we could do it, that'd be great. So that could be something where if we want to, if you want to reach out to the anchor to like advertise, including providing some info, I can help you with that if you want to start.
I'm sure the anchor will be part of the outreach plan.
Okay, 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 good. Because what happens once we put this on the ballot, we cannot advocate anymore as the town. So we have a window that we have to, and I'm saying this for all of us, that we have to start the advocacy sooner rather than later. Again, we're on, we're working up against a lot of deadlines. So I appreciate you getting that public forum together and...
And I appreciate you congratulating me, but it's really Michelle doing the legwork, so thank you.
Appreciate you, Michelle. Any other thoughts about board outreach? We did talk about, too, Ellen, a board summary that I know you were interested in the select board doing, just to communicate what we've been doing over the course of, you know, the last month, a month and a half. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on, on a board summary. What I, what I think I had advocated was really getting a very comprehensive schedule together to ensure that advisory, CPC, and capital budgets all know what's coming at them for special town meeting in terms of who they need to schedule and when they need to schedule and a better inflow of communicating votes. We had a lot of meetings last year on advisory where we weren't quite sure who, how the select board had voted the night before, or you didn't know the following meeting, how we had voted the Wednesday before. So I just think, I think it's really important because this is a really big special town meeting, probably the biggest that I can recall in 10 years in terms of what we're going to be asking for, that we all get on the same page and show leadership to the town as the collective governors of the town, all, all of the boards, by, by hashing out all of our questions and comments and concerns ahead of time so that we're, you know, as united as we can be. So, I mean, I'm happy to work with Chris on that once we start seeing what it's going to look like, you know, being the liaison, getting out to the, you know, Capitol and advisory and CPC and saying, okay, this is going to be coming at you or this is what we're thinking. So Chris, actually, so we, and this might be, this, this might answer what you're thinking. It doesn't perhaps have the level of granularity you may be thinking, but Chris put together, and Chris, I don't want to stir your thunder, but a planning calendar.
I would.
Just about tonight, you know, for trying to put some straw men out there for how we want to proceed.
And none of us knew what CPC was doing 15 minutes before Tommy. That doesn't happen again, and it won't.
Yeah. Okay, Chris, you want to talk about this?
Sure, so I turned this, which just goes on the screen, into what amounts to a planning calendar, it's like a narrative, which, you know, have a capital. So it's, it's, the first thing you have to do is set a date and everything rolls from that, right? So I'm recommending that you set the date no later than the next meeting, August 8th, to allow things to fall into place. And then, you know, warrant developed, you know, you have to decide as board, what are the topics, right? Because we can't be granular without that. And then, again, the recommendation is that you get that done by August 22nd, at least a quarter of it, so we can pull things together and start rolling. And if not the 22nd, at the very least, by the very, very first meeting in September, which is the 5th. And then you open the warrant on the 5th, it's a trigger, citizen petition trigger for one week. And at that point, well, hopefully by the end of August, we have to tell everybody to roll out that kind of granular here. Here's the process. Here's who is going to go in front of it. It's going to be joint meetings, great. If not, what's the plan? And then the drop dead date is October 10th for November 13th meeting. That allows time, both of the warrants published, literally a figure, and actually the process of posting it. And also to get the ballot questions finalized, should there be any, to the clerk at time. That's actually 35 days ahead, gives a little more time, so it's, you know, if the... And during that whole time, I've been talking to council on a thing, what you can send out to the public, what kind of information, all of that. As you've already done, public engagement, this whole power affair and public engagement. So the board needs to say, okay, we need to do this. Chris suggested go back, Michelle, figure it all out, come back and give us a plan. You know, social media, Facebook Lives, meetings in here, postcards, flyers. We've done all, and I think this would require all of that. And also, you know, all of you can host, you know, you can push... you could push stuff on your own social media pages to let people know what's going on. The, again, the goal would be to have every committee moving in the same direction at that point, asking really important questions.
Right.
And then, there's other key dates at the end. So, we're in the network, the next six weeks are really critical to make those go. And then, again, and again, you were also talking about the date. So, it turns out that, well, the 18th is probably the preferred date for the board. She can do the Wednesday or Thursday of that week if you prefer, to be like earlier in the week. Just the day after is just too much, but the Tuesday after the Monday meeting. What she can do with those other two. I don't, I don't think there are any other holidays I can double check. And we can use, we have to, we have that at town hall. We've already secured the gym, I believe, for the special time meeting for the 13th. I've secured the moderator and the council, so they're available on the 13th. If that's the day you want.
Lucky number 13, okay.
And that also gives us time, that's, that's as late as Jennifer recommends we go to in order to get, if, if there's ballot votes, to get them on this year's cycle. So, you can start making those investments.
Collecting funds.
If the committee votes, you make those investments at the schools, making those investments. So, okay, so this is start. This can get much more granular, but it's, here's the, here's the frame on which you have to hang stuff, so.
So, let me ask the board, how does everyone feel about November 13th for special town meeting? Concerns, questions?
No problem with me.
Okay.
No, we'll do what we did last year. We'll punch it through. This is going to be a busy town meeting now.
Yeah. How does everyone feel about November 18th, which is a Saturday, the Saturday before Thanksgiving for a special town election? Other options?
For Thanksgiving is very difficult because so many people are out of town, visiting relatives.
And they're not really thinking about absentee ballots as they're.
Right.
Trying to pack and all that.
Yeah.
What about the 15th?
It's the week before, though, right?
Yeah.
It's the week before Thanksgiving. I, I think, I think we do it. I don't think as many people just, you know, go on the football game. I don't think as many people leave town.
No, neither do I.
As you think, and you have college kids home, families are home. I, I think people are going to be out of town any day of the week, any month of the year. I mean, no matter, no matter what day we choose. So, I, I think we just lock in this date.
I think we're good with that date.
I'm fine with it.
What, the?
The 18th.
I don't think that many people will agree with Ellen. People aren't really.
Seniors do.
Yeah. But it's the Saturday before, I mean.
So.
They won't be there.
So, so maybe we do a more extensive outreach for mail-in ballots?
I do get the impression from the clerk that mail-in ballots are becoming a more and more popular option for people. So, maybe a combination of the 18th and a campaign encouraging mail-in ballots, which, by the way, requires requesting the mail-in ballot ahead of time.
Right.
Because when you walk into town hall to get it, you create a logjam in the clerk's office.
True.
Yeah, we need a pretty big outreach campaign on that one.
We have a senior center, and they have a newsletter, and they have, they have a lot of vehicles of communication to the, to the seniors, so.
Excellent communication department.
That's right. All on you, Justin.
The town clerk and I recently met about, just to start the conversation with that, so we're ready to rock and roll. We already met each once.
80% voter turnout?
So, Justin, Justin, why did you make us go through all this? You could have spent about 10 minutes ago.
I said I could have covered. Okay, well, it sounds like people are more inclined towards November 18th. Is that fair to say?
I'm in favor of the 18th.
I'm in favor of the 18th.
I don't care.
With the robust outreach campaign.
With a robust outreach campaign.
All right. I'd invite a motion for November 13th for special town meeting, November 18th for special town election, just so.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'd second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No one's opposed. Okay.
You're a whole meeting ahead.
And what do people think generally about the special meeting planning calendar?
I think it looks great.
Just a beginning, so obviously we've got to get a lot deeper.
Right, yeah. And anything I can do to help? You know, there's so much on Gene's shoulders. I'm happy to do whatever you might need.
You know, that might suggest that maybe you and Ellen can work together to communicate this schedule to all the chairs to.
This is not the schedule, so.
Push this out.
Yeah.
The straw man to all the chairs so they can plan on their end, so they know what we just voted on. Here's the general schedule. And it should definitely be advisory, capital, schools, school facilities, CPC.
CPC, yeah.
Our zoning bylaw working group.
Yeah.
Rosen Sidewalk Committee. Trying to think of everyone who's going to be a pretty active participant.
So, we usually send out, we've done this for a number of years, it's kind of like a hold place, placeholder for warrant articles.
Yeah.
Which I could do soon now. Now, one of those things is with the special, I mean, the warrant's always a select what's warrant anyway. There's certain things we historically do. We do some budget transfers and do some free cash allocations.
Yeah.
That said, if, you could simply, you could also say, look, we're going to be focusing on these big priorities. So, unless there's something that's really on fire, we're going to hold.
Yeah, we're going to back burner, yeah.
But at least look at us like they were people looking after the spring.
Yeah.
Like, like minor bylaw changes, things like that, might just wait.
But we, we will have some, some zoning bylaw changes this meeting.
Well, I, well, potentially. Again, I guess that's one of the questions is they're going to have to move fairly rapidly.
Yeah, and I know previously they've asked for a separate second day of town meeting for bylaw changes and.
Or they don't want to be last, after everybody leaves.
Yeah.
Well, it's for conversation.
Yeah.
Well, did Tom ask you for that?
He's previously brought it up, so I'm just anticipating it might be a request again, particularly with such a packed meeting on so many other issues.
He hasn't, he hasn't brought it up with the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's always a, a good idea. We are aware that there's challenges in getting it, but part of the solutions may be, and I'm, probably will be splitting it among a couple of town meetings. Because there's a lot of information, but I think the, who's the committee to split it into things that can be digested in the regional town meeting?
So, you mean two nights, November 13th and 14th?
Oh, no, no.
Or you mean November 13th and annual town?
And the annual.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You just can't.
Yeah. I, I think, I think we had been given Tom direction on kind of narrowing the focus on.
One thing we may want to do, Justin, now that we've decided November 13th and November 18th, a special town meeting, do a save the date for the entire town, like, let's do the, so people can mark their calendars.
Maybe send a postcard and go out to everybody or something like that. You want something similar?
Yeah. Including those who might be out of town to start the reminder on. You know, a special town election is, I'm not sure the last time we've done one.
It's been at least 10 years.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Anything we want to try to do to sort of get ahead of this? I think the real challenge is going to be the content on this time schedule. All right, Chris, you want to do a quick update?
Three quick things. One, because of the heat that seems to be coming, the, this building is, is available during regular business hours the next three days for anyone who, you know, who needs to come in and get cool. If we need to go extended hours, we'll see how it goes. So, the building will be here. It's not a generator, should there be a problem, should there be any problems, so the air conditioning will stay locked in here. The, just a quick update that Justin actually was a presenter at a, a conference on emergency preparedness for hurricanes.
That's right. It was the, it was the 2023 Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency Hurricane Symposium. There were about 200-plus emergency managers there, first responders there. I worked a breakout session with FEMA's PIO and former news reporter, who I actually used to work with back in the day. So, we spoke with about 50 or so first responders, emergency managers, about how to properly interact with the media and kind of manage the media during stressful situations.
So, they've had, on the overhead signs on the highway, they've had the hurricane preparedness, get ready, find your plan, those kind of flashing things.
Saw that this week.
Yeah, distract drivers, but. So, is Christian Cunnies still involved with FEMA?
He's a MEMA official.
He is.
He is, yeah.
He is the Public Information Supervisor.
Okay.
For Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency.
Okay.
And then he has kind of a deputy PIO who I work with. But I also work with.
With Christian, yeah.
We're very MEMA-plegged these days.
Yeah. Christian's a recent high school graduate who was very involved, even as a high school student, college student.
I remember.
Yeah, yeah.
And the last thing is really just to, to control some, some rumors that are out there. So, there was a big posting on Facebook after a purported developer circulated plans for an alleged 120-plus unit development on Main Street. So, let everybody know, there is no, no plans been filed. If a plan is ever filed, it would have to go through a very long public vetting. And without prejudging anything, it, it does seem that from what I saw, it doesn't seem to comport with any zoning or utility availability that I'm aware of. That said, I guess if something actually got presented, it would go through the whole process of process. That said, there, there is no plan. There's been no presentation of a plan officially to anybody. So, if there is, everyone will know. I just want everyone to know that. I realize that something floated from time to time. This is literally off the people who voted. It's not, and, and again, if anything ever did get presented, I'm sure it would get very widely noticed, and there'd be a lot. And in that, in that particular service, there's wetlands, conservation, there's planning, there's zoning, there's.
Yeah, he's got a whole load of stuff to do. I think he was a feeler.
So, it, it was.
Did you hear from any of the abutters? Because the, the letter that he wrote that was posted, you know, said, dear neighbor, so to speak. Did any of the abutters, like on.
Not in my office. I mean, I know people post stuff on Facebook. I mean, I've asked the planning department just as an exercise to tell me what's even conceivable on that. I mean, I, I mean, there are homes there already. I mean, there are homes that kind of stick out.
There's three, yeah.
So, I, and, you know, and whether the disease was on the property, I mean, I don't have all that detail. Cassandra's been out a couple of days this week, so. But I've asked just to, you know, just so we have some ideas if something came in, like what we're talking about.
Where is it located?
It's, it's kind of down the block from Dolan Lane. It's kind of back, it backs up to Cedar Acres, Jack. It's land that's back up.
Yeah, like Powers Lane.
Yeah, Powers Lane.
Which is on the right, heading towards Forest.
There's a, there's a pretty large piece of land back there. Though, there's a house sitting, and I don't, there's no, there does not appear to be any substantial frontage or anything. So, I, I.
I got asked about it five times this weekend.
So, it's kind of popped up the very end of the week, and all of a sudden it was, it was, so Justin actually mentioned to me, and I, I found that there was no actual application. So, I'm just letting people know. If there is, we'll mostly let people know, but that's, that's it. So, that's, that's what, that's my record.
Had a nice pool going on. There's a nice pool on the plains.
Oh, yeah, well, that's great. I mean, you need more pools.
Anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay. Mr. Plux, any select board comments you'd like to provide?
Not tonight, thank you.
Mr. Brady?
No, I'm pretty good, thanks, though.
Mr. Grayton?
I'm fine.
Miss Moore?